Good morning and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson, Minneapolis City Council President, and this morning I'm joined by my colleague Blong Yang, council member from the 5th Ward of Minneapolis. And before our council meetings, frequently we have an opportunity to honor significant achievements in our community, people that have performed great services for the city of Minneapolis. And this morning, it's our pleasure for our first guests to welcome the North High Polers' state football championship -- champions. It's always extra fun when we get to recognize young people in our community and the fine things that they do. So why don't you guys come on up and join us with your coaches and athletic director, and I'm going to turn this over to my colleague Blong Yang. And kind of half of you go on one side and the other half go on the other side of Blong there so that we all get on camera.
All right, good morning. This is not quite like seeing Obama, but I mean, it's the next closest thing for Minneapolis. So thank you all for being here. And you know, we're joined here with Athletic Director Leo Lewis, who is towards the very end there, and Coach Charles Adams, who's right there, your dad, who's a coach as well, and Coach Beal Verdel, who's right there as well. And so thank you all so much. And then the football team. My goodness, I've been to so many games and you know, I have to say, just incredible year. You know, I think most people just thought that, you know, the team without Tyler Johnson just would have, you know, gone down in terms of the quality, but I mean, I'm amazed at the quality just that played this year. So thank you so much. And I'm going to read the resolution, I'm going to pass the microphone to the A.D., Leo Lewis, and then I will pass the mic to Coach Adams, okay? All right, so this is a resolution from the mayor and the city of Minneapolis, the city council honoring the 2016 Minneapolis North High Polers football team. Minneapolis North Community High School, North High, is in the 5th Ward. In 2015, the North High Polers football team was the first Minneapolis public high school to play in the state championship in 38 years, losing a closely contested game. The team returned in 2016 with a renewed commitment to win the state championship. The team compiled an 8-0 regular season record and an undefeated 13-0 record on the season. For the second year in a row, the North High football team earned the Minneapolis City championship. The North High football team won the Section 4A finals defeating St. Agnes, Kirkholvin, Murdock, Sunberg, and Meyer Lutheran. In the Class A state playoff, North High met and defeated Janesville, Waldorf, Pemberton, and Wabasso. And the North High Polers football team defeated Rushford Peterson 30 to 14 to win the 2016 Minneap - or Minnesota state Class A championship. Whereas the leadership of head coach Charles Adams, a Minneapolis North High graduate and a Minneapolis cop, serving as the North High School Resource Officer, has been instrumental to the team's continued success. Coach Adams was named the 2016 Coach of the Year by the Minnesota Vikings youth football team, two years in a row as Coach of the Year, as I recall. And you all, you're going to have to clap at this one too. Coach Adams became the first African-American head coach to win a Minnesota state championship. And let me just say that this is North High's first football championship. The resurgence of the North High Polers football team has reflected the growth and the resurgence of North Minneapolis, and the North High Polers were the first Minneapolis public school team to win a state championship in 39 years. Whereas the city of Minneapolis is proud to recognize the accomplishments and commitment of the North High Polers football team, its players, coaches, and fans. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city council on behalf of the people of Minneapolis hereby honor the 2016 Minneapolis North High Polers football team and give recognition of their state championship. Congratulations, guys.
This is becoming routine for us. We'd like for this to continue, of course, certainly with our basketball team winning it earlier in 2016. But on behalf of Minneapolis North Community High School and Minneapolis School District, we do really appreciate the honor bestowed upon us here. Certainly is not without recognizing the hard work of our student athletes and our coaches and all the staff members that have helped, you know, put our athletic program back to a recognizable program, certainly in the city of Minneapolis. So we do thank you very much. I'm going to certainly give most of the time to our student athletes and our head coach, Coach Adams, so I'll give the microphone to him. Why don't we just start with our Coach Verdel, okay? So you want him to recognize everyone? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Odell Wilson, I'm a junior.
Javon Walker, I'm a junior.
Farlender's Ross Cunningham, I'm a sophomore.
Keon Porter, I'm a sophomore.
Zion Sanford, I'm a junior.
Kariyan Bellfield, and I'm a junior.
Jermaine Smith, I'm a senior.
Corleone Powell Smith, I'm a junior.
Jameer Jackson, I'm a senior.
Faison Scott, I'm a senior, or junior. Becoming a senior.
Joseph Coleman, I'm a senior.
Philip Scott, I'm a senior.
Leon Haines, junior.
Devontae Moore, I'm a freshman.
Sophomore Armon Dalton.
Isaiah Rogers, I'm a senior.
And Charlie Adams, I coached the defensive backs. And I'm Charles Adams III, the head coach. Let's give it up for these boys. Once again, thanks President Johnson and Blong Yang. He's a ride or die North Sider. I mean, he's at everything we do, supports everything that we do, and we really appreciate what you do for us. Anybody that knows me, it has nothing to do with what I do. It's about these kids in this community. My father is the person that I learned everything in life from, so I usually lead from his direction. But it's, this was special. I mean, I've had so many people come to us and say, "Thank you." And it didn't really kick in until I just realized that it was bigger than just North High. It was something for the city. So my plan now is to continue. And the success isn't about just winning the championship. It's about making these young men successful in other things other than, you know, just sports or just being successful people in life. And they can hold their heads for the rest of their life for something like this. It's a major accomplishment because it obviously hasn't been done a lot. I plan to do it some more though, but with and without some of you guys. But it's been, it's been a pleasure. I continue to, let's build this North Side. Let's get the kids that need to be here, let's get them back home. They don't need to go nowhere else. I'm here, we're here. And we, everything that they see on TV, we can give it to them, so. But thank you for the support. We're going to keep riding this high as long as we can. Why not? That's what I tell them. Watch out for the rings, and when you see them championship rings, it's going to be something to reckon with. So thank you and we appreciate being here.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
We have breakfast for you all in 3:19, so we got plenty of food.
Teenagers, they'll eat. You're welcome, you're welcome, you're welcome. Also, this morning, we have an opportunity to honor a group of people that were very integral in the city's housing development. And as I told my colleague, Councilmember Glidden, I went to high school out in South Minneapolis, so I have been in this neighborhood many, many times and didn't realize we had this really special group of homes that are being designated historically. And so Councilmember Glidden is going to present the resolution that we will be passing later on in our council meeting, and then also explaining the initiative for historic designation for the Tilson Built Homes.
Thank you very much, Council President, and I want to think we have a large group that is with us today to recognize the Tilson Built Homes. And we're going to have a resolution that talks a little bit about the story of the Tilson Built Homes, which I think is important to place in the broader context of understanding issues of race, racism, and racial segregation in housing in the city of Minneapolis and really in the United States of America. We went on a journey together, I think, in South Minneapolis for some of us who were unaware of this important part of our history. And so there are a lot of thanks to give for that, but I want to recognize that the Bryant Neighborhood Organization, as well as the Field Regina North Rep Neighborhood Group really have been committed to trying to understand and acknowledge and make more public this history. I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution, and then we're going to introduce some of the people who are here who have some very special relationship to the Tilson Built Homes. And this is a resolution... It's a resolution of the city of Minneapolis, so the mayor and city council honoring the Tilson Built Homes as one of the first FHA-backed residential housing developments in the United States to be marketed to buyers of all races. Whereas housing discrimination based on race is part of the history of Minneapolis and of the United States, and was enforced and encouraged by the federal government well into the 20th century. And whereas the Federal Housing Administration and the Veterans Administration, both created in the early 1930s, made homeownership accessible to millions of white Americans by guaranteeing mortgages, but discriminatorily excluded African-Americans from these same benefits through its practices and procedures. And whereas the FHA utilized discriminatory practices until the United States Supreme Court's determination in 1948 that racial covenants were unenforceable, and then continued to create and enforce racially segregated housing by refusing mortgages to interracial housing projects into the 1950s. And whereas the federal government's discriminatory actions were reinforced by the actions and inaction of local and state governments, banks, realtors, and neighborhood associations, including in Minneapolis. And whereas in the years immediately following World War II, the growth of racial covenants and redlining discriminatorily restricted housing opportunities, especially access to mortgages for African-Americans in Minneapolis, resulting in a severe housing shortage. And whereas in 1940, 90% of Black Minneapolitans lived in just 18 of the city's 121 census tracts. Between 1946 and 1952, over 9,500 single-family homes and duplexes were built in Minneapolis, yet fewer than 20 were sold to African-American buyers. And whereas in 1953, the Minneapolis Urban League hosted a meeting with the FHA and several African-American realtors hoping to develop a pilot integrated housing project for the region. And whereas distinguished philanthropist and developer Archie Givens Sr., a young realtor at the time, committed himself to recruiting a builder and a location for a racially integrated housing project. And whereas Archie Givens Sr. recruited Edward Tilson, a Ukrainian Jewish immigrant and prominent builder in the Twin Cities who had himself experienced discriminatory treatment based on his religion, and who was the only builder at the time with experience building integrated housing. And whereas Archie Givens located a collection of scattered lots in South Minneapolis, south of 38th Street, on 3rd, 4th, and 5th avenues, which were purchased for the development from Mike Kelly, former owner of the Minneapolis Millers. And whereas the Tilson Built Homes, a group of 52 single-family homes in the Bryant, Regina, and Field neighborhoods, were constructed by Edward Tilson's company between 1954 and 1956, becoming one of the first FHA-backed residential housing developments in the United States to be marketed to buyers of all races. And whereas the original owners of the Tilson Built Homes were professors, business owners, civil servants, Pullman porters, factory workers, teachers, mechanics, and restaurant employees, enlisted military and veterans, they put love and care and respect into their homes and their neighborhoods on behalf of their families and themselves. And whereas today, the Tilson Built Homes are owned by a multicultural group of neighbors who are committed to telling the stories of their homes as part of the ongoing story of race, racism, and racial segregation in Minneapolis neighborhoods. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that the city council honors and thanks the family of Archie Givens Sr., the family of Edward Tilson, the Minneapolis Urban League, the original Tilson Built homeowners, and all others who helped establish the Tilson Built Homes as one of the first racially integrated residential housing developments in the United States. And be it further resolved that the city council thanks those who have fought against racism and on behalf of fair housing for all, and acknowledges the importance of reversing the present-day effects of racism and racial segregation in the city of Minneapolis. And I'm sorry about it, before I turn the mic to some of our special guests, I just had a couple more, there's only so much you can say in a resolution. And so we are very honored that we have some original homeowners that are with us today, from the Martin family, from the Davis family, and we want to see if they would like to make some comments. But I wanted to also just say a couple words about Edward Tilson and Archie Givens, and we're going to hear from their family members as well. Part of the reason that the Tilson Built Homes is being designated is based on the importance to social history of the fact that this housing development was constructed, but also based on the importance of the connection of these homes to Mr. Givens and Mr. Tilson. And of course, Archie Givens Sr., along with his wife Phoebe Mae Givens, were widely recognized as Minnesota's first Black millionaires. They also developed the first racially integrated nursing home in Minnesota, which was in the Field neighborhood at 46th and 4th Avenue. Affordable housing projects throughout the Twin Cities established the Givens Foundation, and we have now today the Givens Collection of African-American Literature at the University of Minnesota. And something I wanted to say about Edward Tilson. So we talk in this resolution about the fact this is one of the first in the United States of FHA-backed integrated housing projects. And when I say one of the first, I think I read in the report that up till 1955, they believed there were only 50 racially integrated housing projects in the United States. But in 1947, Edward Tilson, this Edward Tilson, developed the first known interracial privately developed rental housing project in the nation, which is a series of row houses along Carroll Avenue in St. Paul. And so I just wanted to be able to mention that and be able to make sure that people can understand some of that history. So I would like to invite maybe first some of the family members, if they would like of the Tilsons and the Givens, if they would like to make any comment. And then we have some homeowners, and I'd like to know if they would like to have anything to say. And maybe since you're close to me, I'm going to pass it over here, and I'm going to ask if you could maybe introduce who's come with you and...
My name is Cynthia Brewst-Moore. I am the oldest grandchild still living in Minnesota. We have here my cousin David Tilson, his wife Barb, my daughter Andrea Bierano-Robinson, and Jeff Tilson, who is the great-grandson of Edward and is currently running Tilson Built Homes or Tilson Construction Company. One of my, one of the memories that this brought back was a family reunion we had when my kids were little, where all of us wore "Tilson Built Means Quality Built" t-shirts. And I think that I wanted to read a few things and let you know a few things about my grandfather that... I'm sorry. I just wanted to know a little, wanted you to know a little bit about my grandfather and why we're so proud of this resolution and why he would have been so honored. Ed was born just before the turn of the 20th century in a small town that was sometimes in Poland and sometimes in Russia. He came to America as a young teen in the aftermath of his czarist pogrom. He met my grandmother as a traveling salesman in the towns and farms of the Dakotas. These two teenage immigrants taught themselves to read and write English, raised her three sisters and a brother who died young, and then five children of their own through the First World War, the Second World War, and the Great Depression. By the time we grandchildren came along, there were 23 of us. Grandpa had found that building houses was a way he could provide for his family and for other families. For many years, he was head of the Minnesota Home Builders Association. He almost lost that post because of building houses and insisting on selling them in an integrated fashion. I think the first ones, he actually sold one to a Black family, the next had to go to a white family, the next had to go to a Black family. And that was on the edge of what we used to call the ghetto in St. Paul. My grandfather hated prejudice of any kind, and he faced it throughout his career, antisemitism, as well as struggling to provide homes. He felt that, I think David will tell you, he felt that every veteran deserved to have a house. I'm not going to take up more of your time by telling you the stories of my cousins and their children and their grandchildren, but they all seem to have inherited grandpa's sense of justice. I just want to say how proud we all are that you see fit to preserve this bit of Minnesota history. In the face of increasing divisions among people and the public scorn that has recently been heaped upon our immigrants, I hope the Tilson Built Historic Site will carry his legacy to his family's children and to your children.
I just wanted to add a couple things that my grandfather would say to me, and he was a teacher and a storyteller, but just, just to kind of, just give the flavor of the kind of things is, you know, he loved America, you know, because he came from Russia and pogroms. And one thing, and he'd say, my sons, you know, one of them became a lawyer, you know, they were all successful, and he'd say, "There's two things in America that enabled my children to be successful," and he said, "One was free public education, and the other was labor unions." You know, and that's kind of the kind of thing he used to say to me, you know, which I, and I just remember that. I could tell stories for a long time, but I just wanted to share that.
And Mr. Givens, I'm just going to invite him to come up. And I will just note that Roxanne Givens, his sister, has been very involved in this work as well, and we're sorry she couldn't join us.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. On behalf of my sister Roxanne and our whole family, it is indeed an honor and a thrill to be a part of this whole event and this afternoon, this morning. I remember as a kid growing up, my dad used to take me with him over to the model home in South Minneapolis on 43rd and 41st and 3rd, and I'd sit there with him, and I didn't understand what in the world he was doing, why am I here? But we ended up living in one of those homes. I grew up in one of those homes, and it's been an honor to be continued with the Tilson family, continued with the city of Minneapolis, and my profession, occupation is actually real estate development, so it kind of passed on. But I thank the city and thank you for acknowledging this historic homes and historic segment of our population, our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then the Martin family has joined us.
Thank you so much. My name is Karen Martin, and here with me is my sister Kelly Martin and Cornelius Martin, who is a homeowner of the Tilson Built Home. So we are here and we are, we want to thank you for allowing us to be a part of this preservation project. It has been fun. We love the house, and we will continue to be in the house and as it's passed down from generation to generation, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And then I... We are also joined by Lionel Davis and some members of his family.
Next to the actual building of the house, I would say the other important aspect was the, the welcome that we got at Field School. Bradley Benson principal was just marvelous, the importance of that.
I'm Barbara Davis and grew up in the neighborhood, and one of the things that I liked about this process was getting to know people on other blocks who lived in these houses. And it really hit home about how, it wasn't just the houses themselves, it was the community that was created that was so important. It was a community where everybody watched out for everybody else. And it brought home, for me, the importance of the infrastructure of a city, and how important Field School was in this process, and Central High, and Hosmer Library, and the various churches, and I... And I'd also like to thank St. Peter's AME Church for opening up for all of our meetings. And thank you to Councilwoman Glidden.
My name is Angela Conley, and I am the Vice President of the Bryant Neighborhood Organization. And it's just an honor to serve the community, and it's certainly an honor to live in this historic community of Bryant Neighborhood.
Hi, I'm Lakeisha Vance-Wilkerson. I actually did an internship with Councilmember Glidden in her office a couple of summers ago. And so, I had a chance to actually work on this historical designation project and establishing, finding more homes and reaching out to the families in these homes. I actually had a chance to interview Mr. Archie Givens Jr. and his sister Roxanne at one point in time. I got to actually have conversations with Mr. Tilson and his family. And I think this project is wonderful for the community. I think it's a good part of the South of Minneapolis, not being a Minneapolis native. The integration of the neighborhood is, was growing. This is what is becoming of our world today is not just one race, one culture. It's very diverse. And the fact that these men came together at a time where they had as many barriers as you could possibly think of to hold them back, to keep from integrating these neighborhoods, they still worked, they still pushed even through the extension of I-94. They went to the other side. You're not going to stop us. There are people coming home from war. There's African-Americans, Mr. Tilson family being the immigrant family and coming in and trying to make a name and a place for themselves. So, I'm very proud of what they've done. The family is just beautiful and, um, I don't know.
That's great. I'm going to ask everyone's indulgence if maybe we could just get in a little closer together. I'm going to ask if we could do a picture. And I wonder if someone would mind helping so that Deba could be in the picture. I just want to acknowledge that Deba Sardar from my office played a really significant role in helping bring this picture to fruition. And Lakeisha, who just spoke, was part of the Urban Scholar Program.
Come on up.
Yep, yep. We just want to be able to see you, so. A little bit more over here. You don't want to pull you. Can you see her?
Move a little farther.
Yeah, there you go, there you go. A little farther, a little farther.
There we go.
All right. Okay, one, two, three, I want to take a couple. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martin.
I just, I want to say one thing. And as someone who's been around for a really long time, David mentioned the value of the public education is one of the things his grandfather was so insistent on. And David served the city on the school board. For how many years, David?
Eight years.
Eight years. So, thank you for your service, and it's good to see you. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon. Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy is absent. Worsami is absent. Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 11 members present.
We have a quorum present. Councilmember Quincy has a family commitment. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. And we have a motion by Councilmember Glidden to include under the Order of Business, the Order of Resolutions, a resolution honoring the Tilson Built Homes as one of the first FHA-backed residential housing developments in the United States to be marketed to buyers of all races. Is there a second on that motion?
Second. Oh, that was me.
Okay, that's fine.
Who else is here?
Yep.
Second. There we go.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 23rd, 2016. Oh, my goodness, that was our last regular meeting? And the adjourned session held, oh, okay, adjourned session held December 7th. Any discussion on that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next is referral petitions, communications, and reports of proper committees.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next. And the first is committee of the whole. And that committee is chaired by the council vice president, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you. We have two items in front of us. The first is a proposed charter amendment regarding use of premiums received in a bond sale. And the second is the passage of an ordinance relating to sick and sick time, exempting certain state subsidized extended employment programs from coverage under the requirements of Chapter 40. And for item number one, I guess our motion is to table this until the, until the next time that we meet. And I will move approval of item number two.
Councilmember Glidden has moved to table item one and move item two in the committee of the whole. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
The Community Development Regulatory Services Committee is bringing 22 items forward for approval this morning. They include a number of land sales, license applications. A couple of notable items include the Upper Harbor Terminal redevelopment project, the master developer agreement to move forward on a limited basis with approved developer. And then, also, item number 22, which is the policy direction surrounding the infill housing workgroup recommendations. With that, I'll move items 1 through 22 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved to the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, wanted to comment on item number 16, which is the modifications to the term sheet for 800 Washington Avenue South project. I wanted to thank Mortenson, our city staff, as well as the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association for their flexibility and ultimately, coming to an agreement on this project.
Any further discussion on any of the items on Community Development Regulatory Services Report? Seeing none, I just want to comment briefly on the Upper Harbor Terminal redevelopment, master developer team selection, another step forward in redeveloping what's an exciting potential for us in the riverfront in North Minneapolis. So, I'm excited to move forward and looking forward to working with a very skilled team in this, in this project. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward nine items today for consideration. The first is approving our appointments to the Public Health Advisory Committee. Second is directing Health Department staff to work with state on a variance process to allow dogs and more establishments in Minneapolis. The third is an agreement with the Center for Energy and Environment to continue doing work on our professional building, benchmarking, and disclosure ordinance. The fourth is authorizing an agreement with OMADA to continue online diabetes education services going throughout the remainder of this year. The fifth item is authorizing a grant application for federal-led and healthy homes support. The sixth item is accepting a grant from the Department of Education, funding from the Wilder Research Center to participate in a study on intervention strategies in our school-based clinics. And the seventh item is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Health. This is $1.5 million for public health home visiting for low-income and at-risk families. The eighth item is authorizing an agreement with Pillsbury United to provide sexual health services for young people of color. And the ninth item is a staff direction, directing our Health Department staff to request additional funding and rollover funds to support sexual health services for young people of color. I will move items 1 through 8, but I would like to move item 9 to refer it back to committee. The backstory on that one is that the Ways and Means Committee had a different recommendation, so there's actually two recommendations before the council. I haven't had an opportunity to discuss this with the Ways and Means Chair, who's out of town. And I'd like that opportunity, and then, I'll bring it back again, perhaps in a different form. So, hopefully, that's clear.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. All items with item 9 referred back to committee. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. That committee is chaired by the council vice president, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items. The first is a resolution supporting the resettlement of Syrian refugees in Minneapolis and the state of Minnesota. The second is some additional updates to the 2017 legislative agenda, and I will move approval of both items.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami is absent. Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards 13 items today for full consideration. Item 1 is the Fourth Street Southeast Reconstruction and Street Lighting Project, approval of assessments and areaway abandonments. Item 2 is the Fourth Street Southeast Reconstruction Project and Street Lighting Project, approval of the assessments and the areaway abandonment. Item 3 is 18th Avenue Northeast, from Monroe to Johnson Street Reconstruction, project approval and assessment of the areaway abandonments. The item 4 is the Storm Sewer Cleaning Contract Amendment with Vortec Hydrovac Incorporated. Item 5 is the Ready-Mix Concrete Contract Amendment with Chemstone Products. And I think I'm reading from the wrong list. Someone gave me the wrong list. So, the actual items that we will be considering today, because I think all those items were approved previously. Item 1 is the Special Service District Advisory Board appointments. The areas are listed, and the people that will serve on those boards as well are listed. Item 2 is the 42nd Avenue North Street Reconstruction Project from Xerxes Avenue North to Lindale Avenue North. Item 3 is the Concrete Street Rehabilitation Program, project designation and setting the public hearing, which will be February 28th. Item 4 is the I-35W Lake Street Transit Access Project, project designation, setting the public hearing and the parking restrictions, and that public hearing will also be February 14th. Item 5 is the I-35W Lake Street Transit Access Project. That's authorizing the negotiation-execution of a supplemental agreement with MinDOT to proceed. Item 6 is the sale of the city-owned vehicle to the University of Minnesota. Item 7 is the Fourth Avenue Street Signal Upgrade Project and contract amendment with Thomas &amp; Sons. Item 8 is the grant acceptance from the State Safe Routes to School Funds for Lindale School Crossings Project. Item 9 is Lime Sludge Holding Tank Repair Projects. That's a contract amendment to continue that work. Item 10 is the Metropolitan Council Infiltration and Inful Grant Program, and that's accepting a grant from that council. Item 11 is the Downtown East 2017 operations for the amounts listed. Item 12 is the bid for Lindale Safe Routes to School Project. Item 13 is the bid for the Columbia Heights Filtration Plant Partial Masonry Project, and that's the low bid. I move all items, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy. The report will be given by Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have 10 items before us today. The first four are legal settlements. The fifth is reduction of an assessment for 2518 Second Avenue North. Item number six is appointments to the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee. Item seven is a lease with the Walker Art Center for Equipment Storage at Vinland Ramp. Item eight is acquisition of real estate from Hennepin County for the East Side Storage and Maintenance Facility Project. Item nine is approving acceptance of a bid for Traffic and Maintenance Facility Paint Tumblr Project. And item 10 is, again, a settlement of legal claims. And I would move approval of all 10 items.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes. Item number two is approving an application for a vacation at 1203 Washington Avenue South for Excel Energy and CenterPoint. Item number three is approving a rezoning at 861 Hennepin Avenue East. I'll note there's a resolution, a motion authored by me in your packets that's amending the description of the location of that site. Item number four is approving an application for a rezoning at 2601 through 2621 Lindale Avenue South to allow for a new mixed-use development there at 26th and Lindale Avenue. Item number five is passage of a resolution for the local historic designation of the Pilgrim Rest Baptist Church. And item number six is the local historic designation for the Tilson Built Homes Historic District. And I'll move items 1 through 6 with the motion on item 3, as well as the motion on item 6 authored by Councilmember Glidden that makes some amendments to the historic district.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report with those changes noted and in front of us on item 3 and item 6. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the reports of the special committees. The first is the Audit Committee, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one item that we're forwarding to full council for approval, and that's approving the reappointment of Mr. Scott Neal to our audit committee. That is the council's reappointment, and it's for a three-year term.
Councilmember Palmasano has moved the Audit Committee Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Worsami.